Morning Larry.
Hi Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is February 22nd. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I would please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave for leading the pledge. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. Any additions or removals? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Jerry, was there something you wanted to add on there? I thought you had mentioned something earlier.
Uh, no, I isn't, I'm trying to, I should have printed the agenda because I don't have it in front of me, but um, I think Valley County Soil and Water's coming in today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to start that conversation, I just want to ask them a couple of questions, so.
Yeah, kind of about the overlap between our plan. So, yeah, that's not really a change.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on a 1045 as an action item.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make the motion when we approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
Who did second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll get right on into our agenda. Uh, these are action items. The first one up is the meeting minutes of February 14th. And I sent a few comments to Doug on the end, but I think everything else looked great.
I didn't see anything that needed to be changed.
It was on the motion and second of the executive sessions. Need to fix that, so.
Okay, I would move that we approve the meeting minutes from February 14th.
I'll second that.
Who did second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is a Ed Pro reimbursement request, uh, second half payment. This is for, I'm assuming for economic development?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
And do they normally have to request that, or do they just get that whenever we get the money?
Uh, we request, they, so the Valley County Economic Development Committee has already received the payment of $30,000. Uh, this is requesting our second half reimbursement through Idaho Department of Commerce.
So it'd be for $15,000?
That's correct.
I'll make the motion. Sorry, what was that? Oh.
Everybody understand, I entertain a motion.
Sure, yeah, as I say, I'll make the motion that we approve the, um, sorry, blanking out, Ed Pro reimbursement, the second half final pa- uh, payment.
A second about.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Ran it in on the agenda, ran it together with the grooming drag.
Yeah, it was kinda like.
Tried to add some other stuff on that motion.
Okay, our next act, agenda item is an action item. This is the award for, um, a domestic grant 22 DG, a whole bunch of numbers for the snowmobile dra- trail grooming drag, and this was for $8,000? Remember that?
Yes.
Seventy-eight hundred or something like that, and this will pay that off and we'll be done.
That was through the rack, is that right? Okay. Perfect. Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, final federal assistance award for the gr- snowmobile trail grooming drag.
A second. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Four years is right, yeah.
Probably only like one day where they're working, three hu- three d- three years and 392 days of waiting.
You want today's date? Assuming.
Yep.
June 22, 22.
That's it.
Okay, um, we're a little early for our next workshop, but I think we can go ahead and start it since it's not an action item. Um, next on our agenda is a workshop to discuss recreation parking in Valley County. And I'm not sure who put this on, but I think it's certainly an issue that we've been dealing with year after year after year. Larry, do you have anything you want to add? If you do, please come up to the mic.
Was there, uh, did Captain Stanbaugh want to be a part of this conversation?
I thought he was the one that called the meeting.
That's what I thought.
Okay, then let's wait, let's wait until quarter after when it's legitimate agenda and we'll wait and see if he shows up.
Do you know too, was there any documentation or anything that, to go with this, or?
I'm just wondering if this was the concern over the Warren Wagon parking that happened two weekends ago when they had their fun run. Was it two weekends ago?
Yes.
And he sent us those pictures of all the folks on the highway. Maybe it's a continuation of that, I don't know.
It was a busy weekend this weekend.
They parked on the highway?
They were on the road, but, uh, we fixed it. I couldn't believe the amount of people parked on this road up along the lake up here and on the other side.
Oh, the ice fishing?
Project I think we're gonna have to start working on is looking for possibly parking that hasn't got anything to do with IDPR up there.
Is that lot that's up there, is that on Forest Service ground, or is that?
Which one?
Are you talking about Anderson Creek?
Anderson Creek is Forest Service.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and Jake Strohmeier said he let us park, we could open up down to the boat ramp at Campbell Creek, but who's gonna pay to plow it? It's kinda like Stonebreaker, who's gonna pay? It'd be expensive to keep that open.
Looks like they could expand that parking lot at Anderson to the north.
We've had that discussion.
It's tiny. I mean, there's hardly room to turn around in there.
Yes, but remember that road was made, uh, three lanes wide through an IDPR grant so that we would have parking on that road. It's just not easy keeping it wide like that when the road department broke their blade earlier in the year. But they try.
Is this one?
That's for the, uh, the seventy-one hundred dollars.
Could we just add some, you know, whatever, a hundred yards or so up the road with the grader when they're plowing that side? How far, how far up does that road get plowed?
Which one?
West Mountain.
Uh, as far as Donley or Anderson Creek?
Uh, no, back in Anderson.
Anderson Creek, um, all the way up to the turnaround. So they, they go to the turnaround and where the big turnaround is there, but this, this time the turnaround was even full of cars, ice fishermen. That's why I'm kinda hoping maybe, I don't know, thinking about a grant to see if we get a grant and try plowing down to Campbell Creek Boat Ramp next year. If we got, that way, see if it works, you know? It's, it's kinda like Stonebreaker though. What happens if we plow it in the morning? Everybody pulls in there and it snows real hard and they can't get out. Do we gotta have a guy available to plow them to get them out like?
You know, I'm not, I think the way to handle that Larry is, you know, most folks know when you get a big hard wind like that, that you probably better think about getting out. We can maybe do that with signage that if.
I used to believe that.
But that's not, you know, yeah, they could get stuck in there.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, cause you know, if we're gonna go with some more help in the recreation department, if maybe that could be something we talk about as far as buying those roads, buying or renting our own piece of equipment or something because.
That's, uh, yeah, I, I.
I don't know if you would do with a truck and a blade, or you need something that's pretty mobile.
I agree.
But when I talked to State Parks and Rec, they didn't really want, um, the island plowed out because it's all brand new pavement and brand new bumpers and, and it's.
I've heard the same thing.
Why did you build it if we can't use it, but?
And there is some more BOR ground down there, maybe we could get our own little parking lot down there, you know, at the bottom or something, just to get them off the highway. That's the main thing.
How was no business this weekend?
Uh, oh, it was packed, but you know, that is signed so well. Um, everybody parks on the right side of the road. It really did well. It's kinda surprised me. But it was packed. All the way out to the, uh, first turn in into that subdivision, it was packed, and then halfway around the loop. So it's, everything is really being well used. They had eighty-six sleds go in from Warren Lake to Stanley this weekend. Yeah, it's a busy weekend.
Anybody know about Dave?
We're waiting for Captain Stanbaugh to come to have this discussion about.
He's on his way.
Parking. We're a little early on the agenda, so we're giving him a few more minutes for him to show up.
Larry, originally, and I, I can't remember where I have it, if I do, there was some map that showed, like the road department had discussed expanding parking lots. My brain is foggy this morning, so I apologize, but.
Yeah, there was a, a plan that Kirk put together, I can't remember what was the last name. Anyway, um, he had a wish list, which is the same wish list we're working off now, and I think we're getting a lot closer on a few of them, to be honest with you. It, it'll be a little different than what we planned on, but we're getting closer.
Perfect.
Fun part's gonna be, you watch, they'll all come through at once, and then we gotta get grants to build them all out at the same time. That'll be the fun part.
Well, we're having a conversation about these ARPA funds, so if there is an opportunity to do something, we need to know about it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, it's all contingent, it's, it's like up at Warren Wagon, you know, we, we perked that ground, we're perking this year to the ground down below, um, because water resources corps of engineers gave us permission to go that far. And if that passes, um, IDL will let us lease that ground. Um, that's about the same size as the Francie Wallace parking lot, and we put almost $185,000 just in Francie Wallace parking lot for pit run to surface that. But it's not, it's.
Where did that pit run come from? Did that come close, or that was from grinding up the old highway, wasn't it?
That was actually from, uh, IDL pit up there, real Green Gate Road.
Oh, is there more of that available?
Uh, not a lot, but there's some, yeah.
That'd be the one that has a lot of casings and shells in it.
Yeah, we get a lot of brass inserts hardened in the parking lot, there's no doubt about that.
Well, I was thinking the other night, you know, we have, the county owns that piece of ground down here on the corner of the highway coming out of the canyon. If some of these areas have more state land, maybe we should consider reaching out to the state and see if they would want to exchange some ground.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be special?
I was thinking like, I don't know, Boulder, some of those places, if there's any state land there that we could just swap ground and not cost anybody anything.
Mm-hmm.
Great idea.
Down there, it's not doing us any good.
No, I'll put that on, on my list for.
I think there's nine acres down there.
At least, yeah. I thought it was.
It's ten.
Is it ten?
Yeah, we just discussed this one too, in that campus planning group. Um, we were trying to figure out what the county owns, and did I send that list to you guys? Anthony did a list of everything the county owns.
Oh.
Nope.
I will send that on. That's why, you know, I mean, getting an update from them might be a good thing. Um, but that was part of the conversation, and there was conversation about, you know, do we keep that for a rest stop? But maybe the state would do a rest stop there if they had enough ground and not put it on our taxpayers.
Yeah, my only concern about that whole thing down there is the ground the state owns now is not very attractive. What they've done with all the rock and cement and stuff there, and I just hope that it wouldn't expand, you know?
Do we have any kinda overs, well, we don't have a board.
State.
Yeah.
But I think the state would have a better, be in a better position to build a rest area than the county would there. Because they have all kinds of funds for that kinda stuff, especially on a state highway like that. Where we don't have opportunity for the grant funding that they would have.
That's a definite need, that's for sure.
And you know, Dave, you talked once about up, I think it was Boulder, that there was this chunk of state land just past where we're plowing.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it'd make a really good summer and winter, uh, trailhead, because there's a lot of UTV and motorcycle use, not bike use.
That to me would be a great thing for you guys to approach the state.
The state is, as I say, they've said that they would lease it to us in the past, but we didn't have anything to offer. You know, if there was something that we could offer them in exchange, that would be a really neat piece of property to have.
If we have ten acres there, we could say we'll take five here and five acres somewhere else.
Is there a difference though between IDL and ITD land?
I would think so, yeah.
That's what'd be my fear, but we can find out, I mean.
Well, I, I'm assuming if it's Idaho or state land, if it's not endowment land, they, they, they have no issue.
I don't know where the endowment lands are.
If it's endowment land, then we're gonna have an issue.
That seems to be a real discussion about what is endowment land and what isn't at times.
And all that was set way back when the state was formed Larry, so a lot of that, even the state can't change.
Yeah.
So if they would lease it to us though, there's a good conversation of, you know, what, what would that look like?
I, I, and, and now it's a lot, uh, it's a lot more viable of a, of a discussion because we've got the ability to charge people using it and offset our costs, so that's, I think we'll make that one of our hit lists on, uh, on our planning.
Well, my personal feeling is I would rather trade them outright so we don't have that lease payment to worry about forever.
It would be nice.
You know, let's just trade and be done with it, and we'll do our thing and you do your thing, but.
That would make a great campsite too.
Oh yeah, it would, yeah.
Jeff?
Morning Jeff.
What would be nice to do is make that a nice campsite, shut down the one at the head of Boulder Reservoir, and just make that a parking area for hiking and stuff, not overnight camping, and let that grow back in a little bit, because that's right in that.
It's a pretty flat ground, Dave, you know?
And it's not a good spot.
It's all, they just logged it last year, and it's beautiful. It's five, five acres. I mean, they've talked about like a three acre parking lot.
Yeah.
It's perfect.
So let's put that down as one of our ideas. Is there any other place where we're seeing a lot of demand for parking that has state land?
We've got a bunch of them, yeah. I mean, Potter Lane, Boulder Lane, we got issues at Lick Creek right now. Uh, Patty Flat, I mean, that's not necessarily state ground, but it's areas that are in our, you know, at the end of our road maintenance.
I haven't been to Lick Creek. Is that a parking lot, or is that just?
There's a, yeah, there's a parking lot up there, there's a snow block turnaround, and every weekend, there's people parked on the road. Little Lake is packed, and it's packed up there.
So Larry, in this old plan, I did find it, there was a recommendation that the old state highway south from W4 Lane be included as a viable plow route to get to the reservoir instead of Stonebreaker. Has that ever been discussed?
Wow, I don't.
Um.
That doesn't seem to fit, to be honest with you.
Well, it would be a shorter trip to Sugarloaf for the ice fishermen.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
I think it would be shorter trip, maybe about the same, maybe, I don't know. Do you know Jeff? If you, if you use the old state highway to the south where it hits the river, do you know what that looks like there? Is there enough room to build a parking? You'd have to buy some?
Still paved, but probably trees growing up in pavement out there.
How long a stretch of road is it from West 4? Mile? Oh, Day Star?
State, state property or private property? I'll, I'll look at it.
I don't know where BOR, private property, you know, move out there.
That's what I thought. I thought that was some of the property that Ken owned in there.
Well, Ken owns where, north where it hits Gold Fork.
Charlie Gibson, Charlie Gibson's got.
There's Bureau ground, I think, out there on both sides of that highway.
Talking to the south.
So somebody writing this stuff down?
Yeah, I was.
I was gonna contact BOR about some of this property up here for a parking lot. I wanna find out how much they're charging IDPR to lease those campgrounds. And put our own parking lot up there.
I don't know how quick.
What were you talking about Larry?
Uh, right across from Big Sage Campground up here, there's a flat spot. Um, people park in there, it's mud right now, but since IDPR won't allow people to park down in there during the winter, it'd be nice to have a parking lot up there that's accessible right off the road, but easy to plow, um, so we can get the ice fishermen off the road.
It looks like Scott and Sherry Nicholson own 427 acres at the end of Old State.
On both sides?
Nope, there's the one side doesn't have anybody, so that's gotta be state, that's gotta be government of some kind. I think BOR has a ton of it in there.
Um, now, Jeff, that, that we talked a year while back about on Warren Wagon, we got that plowed about as wide as we can plow, is that correct?
So we went out this last week and we actually plowed it clear into the, into the borrow ditch on the, uh, on the east side, and, uh, made it a lot wider, and then we went up to fix the issue, because the issue is pullouts. We marked pullouts with red paint on the road and it worked really well. Last weekend, it was well under control. Uh, Dave wanted to make sure that an emergency vehicle can make it right to the head of Warren Wagon Road, but to be honest with you, they'd do better just parking a brush creek and running out there, because they gotta run out on their equipment anyway.
Larry, don't you think it would be wise for us to create a spot just for emergency vehicles at that trailhead?
Well, there, there really is, uh, it's closed from, the trailhead is closed all the way back to the first entrance, and nobody parks in that, so there's a big wide open spot in there.
So there is one already built?
Plenty of room, yeah. And, uh, for the ne- the next big weekend we have, this next weekend won't be, of course, but will be the Warren Crab Feed, and I already talked to the people in Warren, they're gonna give me a couple volunteers and they're gonna help, we'll repaint the pullouts and make sure we got a pullout every so long so people can get in and cars can get by, but we've got a pretty good plan on how to deal with it now.
Um, just so I can kinda get in the back of my head, the expansion at Francie Wallace and Brush Creek, how many more cars will that, or parking spots will that allow?
We would double the size of Francie Wallace.
That's good.
Yeah. Now that would, uh, take more than what we have on the road, off the road. Of course, it's gonna get bigger as time goes on, probably, but at this point, um, that'll open up by perking all that. Our, our plan is to double the size, we, there's still another two and a half, maybe three acres down there that can be dealt with, but we also wanna keep it to where we can build this out financially too.
And then are we gonna develop that for summer camping?
Absolutely. Harden campground.
So Larry, in the meantime, are you working with the sheriff's department on Warren Wagon for the next few weekends till we get through this year?
Um, Kevin shows up to all our, um, our advisory board. I've told him what we're doing. I mean, they're really, sheriffs don't show up unless there's a big weekend, so we're gonna go ahead and mark everything. Like I said, we're doing pullouts, and, uh, that seemed to work really well last weekend.
Okay. I know Captain Stanbaugh had expressed some ideas, and so I just wondered how much, you know, you guys were speaking with them and incorporating their ideas.
Kevin has come to our meetings and he hasn't shared any ideas on it.
Well, and I think the other thing that, that we gotta discuss here a little bit or get out in the open is the fact that I think during special events like a ski club fundraiser, or the Warren Crab Feed, or, you know, or a raft trip at Cabarton, or whatever, that we know we're gonna have overcrowding, and so we've kinda gotta cut slack to people that are parked on the road. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, to me, the worst thing we can do is start towing people or writing tickets to tourists to come up here to spend money. I don't think we wanna get into that. You know?
I agree, and, and that's the reason we started last weekend going out, making the pullouts with the orange paint and the signage, and everybody was really respectful of it. You know, they, they kept the spaces so people can get in and, and get around, and, uh, Warren Crab Feed will be a big one, and like I said, I got volunteers from this, from Warren actually coming out to help us do it with the crab feed.
I do think that we, we need more of a presence from the sheriff's department on those weekends. I think they need to be up there helping direct traffic and talking to people before they walk away from their vehicles that are parked in the middle of the road, because, you know, Stanbaugh's concerns were that that particular weekend, you could not get a vehicle up the road, that there were vehicles coming and going in one lane traffic, and then you had snowmobiles weaving in and out of the traffic as well. So they did have a, I think it was a fatality that weekend, if I'm not mistaken. So McCall Fire and Rescue was trying to get to the end of the road, and they almost couldn't get their vehicle up there.
Well, and I talked to Dave here last week about it, and I think we oughta consider eventually, uh, funding a position or maybe even two part-times, I don't know, in the sheriff's department for an LEO officer just for recreation.
I, I think, I think we have to, because there, right now, there is no LEO on the forest. We have one that's stationed in this area, and he's on maternity, or, excuse me, family leave medical act again, so they have no law enforcement on the pay yet. The only way things are gonna change or we're gonna be able to help
Yeah.
with that is if we help fund it.
And the key has always been, and always will be, they have to work on the weekends. They have to be in there early in the morning, not at 11 o'clock, but they gotta be there early in the morning.
It's like eight to 10 is the key, critical time, yeah.
Part of that job description of that LEO or that person, and, and then, you know, whether it's a full timer or two part-times, I don't know how the sheriff would wanna do that, but they're exploring those avenues right now, kinda talking about it, that we may have to think about next year's budget to put in, you know, more funds for that recreation deputy is what I call it.
Well, I know, I know that, um, Forest Service gets two recreational, uh, snow rangers off of grants with IDPR. So the, the ability, the problem with, as we've always talked about, the problem with a grant is you get a grant, and if you don't get the grant the next year, you gotta lay people off, and that's kind of a negative. But we can kick it off, we can get it started that way, I'm sure.
Well, and I want these, this person to be able to actually issue citations, if somebody gets obstreperous and have legal authorities behind them, that they're an actual legal deputy and that kinda stuff. Not that I wanna play hardball, but I think, um, I used to think that a lot of these sites are gonna re- kinda regulate themselves, because people are gonna pull in there, and I seen it happen at Cabarton. Oh my God, there's too many people and turn around and leave and go somewhere else to play. But a lot of people just plug up the system. To me, we need somebody there to make sure that people are kinda running through, getting things done, whether that's you guys, or if it's a deputy or what, but coordinate and push.
Danny and I have both worked all three days, and, um, I had Danny in that parking lot constantly. We were all through the county, talking to people if we had issues. Everybody understood, and that's why we did the, the pullouts. So we've got all those pullouts along there now, and we'll go in, we probably won't do it this weekend, because it's not a big one. We'll monitor it. If it gets bad, we'll start making them. But, um, we've got the two volunteers for the next weekend, and we'll just plan on every, every time we have a large weekend, being in there and making the pullouts. Until we get the parking lot built.
Have you had any kickbacks from the commercial guys now that we changed the parking rigs up there? Has that gone pretty well?
Um, all of them at one.
All by one?
Yeah.
Well, that's good. That's encouraging, at least for.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's, uh, the parking, if you look at the parking lot itself, they're, they're minding the parking rules a lot better, and it's gone pretty darn well, actually.
Well, and I think one of the things that's helped with that is leaving that snow floor between there and Brush Creek, so that you can unload at Brush Creek and come on up.
Yes.
That, that was a big change too, I think. Jeff's done a great job, his crews doing that.
Yeah. And we've got that airport blade now, and, and we built, uh, it's a quick attachment, so we build an offset on that airport blade, so we can put it on the front end loader and the whole thing's off to the side, so we can cut that edge a little bit and bring the snow on, just for the snowmobiles.
So besides.
Be honest with you, it's, it's gone pretty darn well, and I think we got a good plan on how to get through the big weekends until we get the new parking lot built. But it would be nice to have more enforcement. There's no two ways around that.
I think we could look at funding some, some of that position. I mean, I, I would think that RAC would probably.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I, I would be interested to see, you know, if there was any money. I mean, I know it doesn't pay for salaries, but the Title III, because we're talking about a lot of stuff that's going on, you know, at the boundary of federal lands. And then, you know, we have our infrastructure money that's, a lot of that's being prioritized for recreation, state and federal.
Can you think of any other place besides Lick Creek and Boulder that we need to concentrate some energies on? I know we're kinda working on some stuff at Anderson Creek.
Yeah, so Donley is the hot one right now, and I'm hoping to have that finished by the spring. We won't go into details on that, but I think we're getting really close there.
Not Anderson Creek, yeah.
Yeah. Anderson Creek, Dave and I were just talking about that, or, I mean, that parking lot is so tiny. Yeah, Anderson Creek, Dave and I were just talking about that, or, I mean, that parking lot is so tiny up there. We do have them along the road, and before this ice fishing thing becomes, I mean, it's a huge recreational opportunity, we get people from a lot of states coming and doing that now. But we have to change how we're dealing with that. And if it means that we put a, a plow blade on the front of that one-ton pickup or whatever, like I said, uh, Jake Srohmeyer from the Boise said yes, we could plow into Campbell Creek and open up that parking lot there, which is probably twice the size of the one we're using right now. It's just a matter of the cost of the plowing.
Have you ever approached Parks and Rec on like Blue Heron and some of these on this side of the lake, the lot is plowed there, parking lot, and they've said no?
No.
I'm, I'll work on that one.
And if we could get to the end of um, Old State Highway, that would take some of that pressure off Stonebreaker. And I was looking, some of the complaints were coming from that subdivision that's there off the Old State Highway with people parking in the subdivision and trying to get down to the river, or to the lake. That would maybe cure a bunch of issues in that whole area.
Yeah.
I think the ones we were talking about, we were talking about the, you know, obviously Anderson, West Mountain, Lit Creek we need to address, and then uh, Boulder, those are kinda the priorities, and Patty Flat is getting, is getting more and more use as well, and, you know, you guys have left enough room to get four or five trucks off the road in there, but it's not enough anymore. You got the overnighters, they're going into their cabins, and then people are trying to use it for the day, and I mean, I've been up there where you couldn't even use the turnaround.
We also need to get Clear Creek done as quickly as we can, so bring some of that traffic to the south.
Jeff, you may come to the mic so Sherri can hear you.
I was talking about Patty Flat.
We've got three full-timers that live in Patty Flat now, and we've worked with them very closely on where to park. Because we've had to back out of there before, and it's almost a mile back out of there in a plow truck. I go, the first time you guys screw up, we're just gonna quit plowing it. Because we can't take the chance of backing all the way in there and then getting stuck backing out. So they've been really good last, uh, probably three years now, and we give them a little area to park. We take the snow away from their vehicle, we can plow the turnaround, but we have gone up in the middle of the day to do touch-up or run a road grader up in there to clean stuff up, and like Dave said, there's half a dozen cars parked in our turnaround.
So I'm assuming there's signs there for no overnight parking, all that?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
So I don't know when, but there's an event venue that's been approved back in there, too.
In Patty Flat?
Oh, I'm sorry, Boulder.
Oh, so, so Boulder, just keep the older Shaw generations almost gone, I think. So if we're thinking about building something there, right there at the top, it'd be perfect. Get ten acres in there, I don't know.
I don't know if you heard, like, we were talking about like up there at the five-way, it can't, I think you call it the Turkey Track or something.
Turkey Track.
Yeah, that five-way intersection is to the, the north right there.
That's a big old flat right there.
Yeah, that'd be pretty easy to, uh, if we could lease it or purchase it.
The only problem is, the road going into, it's really narrow, you get two four-place snowmobile trailers that are eight foot wide. Trouble, we, we couldn't keep it open because of all the trees along the road, we couldn't keep the banks pushed back.
Yeah.
Enough to keep it as wide as possible without having a snow blower.
I know, Icola, when they were doing it, they, they plowed, you know, any wide spot that they could get, they plowed as wide as they could get it, and there was just enough room to sneak a logging truck and a vehicle through there. I met them, I met them several times in the last couple of years up there, and that's really the only opportunity, but if we did have, you know, some sort of recreational access up there, we'd get all those people off the end of the road, away from those houses.
Yep, yep. Uh, the big turnaround at the end of Lit Creek, most of that big turnaround's on private property, and those people have put up a wire with T-posts out through the middle of that parking lot.
That's the one at Ty Creek, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I noticed that wasn't plowed at all this year.
Ty Creek?
I E.
Yeah.
T Y E E.
Haven't heard of that one.
Yeah, it's been a, it's always been a snowplow turnaround. But then these new people that bought it, or the older people, they're just tired of people leaving trash and stuff in there, so they had it surveyed, and they've got a fence going across the middle of that parking lot.
So you can't turn around with the?
We go all the way to Snowden and turn around in their little itty-bitty driveway, and that's all we can do.
I'll be honest with you, I haven't been on that road in a long, long time, so I need to go up there and look at that.
Drive up there on a Saturday.
Drive, drive up there on Saturday and go all the way to Yellow Pie next summer.
Jeff, have you researched if there's any private ground up there for sale?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's for sale yet. I mean, the Turkey Track where we're talking, I, I think that's state ground.
On Boulder. Yeah, there's not anything at the end of the road on, on uh, Lit Creek unless you were to plow through those, unless you were to go through those two switchbacks up to the, the old landing.
That's state ground, there's no way to keep people on that section of road, it's steep, two switchbacks in it.
Okay, but is there any at the bottom where we could trade it or buy it or lease it that would?
There's private ground at, there's private ground at the bottom before you start climbing.
Who owns, who owns that rolling ponds area? Like where the parking lot?
That's state, I think.
Sort of thought, because there is room, you could push that out.
There's that little leased area across from
That would be nice, yeah, if we could get in there.
Snowcat in there. Can't remember what his name is.
Artie.
Artie, he's leasing that from IDL, I think. Wherever you decide to make something bigger up there, there's a reason it's that size right now, because there's a giant rock patch.
They do, they do have about seven acres, I think, in that parking area, maybe it's six, but it's a
Only do.
Big area back in there, yeah.
Well, Lit Creek's also a huge recreation opportunity in the summertime. So we should see if there's something in there that might meet everybody's goals.
Yeah, as we keep the scout pond turned out as big as possible in the winter time, but it's still a mile and a half, two miles to the end of the road from there, will be two.
It's a mile, yeah.
Mile.
It's not bad if you're on a snowmobile, but the uh, the problem is, is last, I don't know, several times this weekend, this, this year, there were folks parked on the road across from that parking lot, and you know how close they get to the road when they're parked in there.
Hey Dave, welcome.
I know. There was a big rig that went up and turned around at the end of the road with a snowmobile trailer and came back down, and he almost couldn't fit through, and then Artie came down with his two cats that day, and he couldn't get his bigger cat through either.
It's, make, make everything bigger, they will come, I mean, it's, it's, like Larry said, it's, it's not gonna stop. There's no way it's gonna stop.
No, and um.
We need to disperse.
That's, I think, that's exactly right, Sherri, we need to offer more opportunities elsewhere in the county, and and I think we have quite a few already, I think we've done a great job with that, but once you go to a million people in eight more years, it's gonna be impossible to build it fast enough.
I mean, Sherri mentioned Clear Creek. The whole time I was plowing that, when my guy was on leave, nobody was even using it. And we keep that parking lot plowed out to the hilt, and there's just, once in a while, one or two people use it, but nobody, I don't think there's no, no big openings like up north, big shale faces and stuff for these high-powered sleds, this mainly just for trail riders.
And I think a lot of the locals do that, Jeff, I know.
They do.
Friends that go out there a lot, just to ride the road.
Yeah.
Sometimes folks will go care into Warm Lake for a burger or something, they come back, but.
You dream that one.
It might be a marketing issue, too, if we don't let people know that opportunities are out there, they won't find them.
And I'm just wondering if, on Clear Creek, if we should go ahead and, and do it in a phased development, because I know a lot of folks have expressed interest in, we need water and all that kinda stuff, and we could do that, but still go ahead and build the, the development, parking places of the road, all that stuff now, with the plan on, as soon as we start making money off of it, uh, making some money, we can use that to put the well in and, and the electricity, but we, we need, even dry camping, we just need a spot now to get, kinda get started. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I don't wanna wait until we raise enough funds to build the whole thing, I think we can do it in phases and still be successful.
That makes sense, too, because you could kinda start monitoring the use in there and see what kinda use was coming in, and if bigger, bigger facilities were needed.
I think honestly, right now, there's probably more summer use of that than winter use. The four-wheelers and motorcycles are huge in there in the summer.
Yeah, and as, as more of Herrick Reservoir gets closed down, as a private property, we're gonna see a lot more. Uh, if you remember about four years ago, four, maybe five years ago, we had to put up all those signs, get people to slow down because of the dust into the neighborhoods and stuff. If we could stop that traffic and put it up at Clear Creek, I think that'd help out a lot, and then the other challenge, the reason we lost a lot of u- use back there, used to be a lot of people that would uh, go from Smith Ferry, East Mountain all the way to the Clear Creek lookout and down into there, and they go to Clear Creek for lunch and stuff, and we lost that road across the top. We're gonna try to scout that road in again this summer. I think some of it's gonna have to be rebuilt, because it, it's gone. If you go on uh, if you go on Google Map and, and go to Packer John lookout and follow that road around where they were logging, the road is completely gone now.
Is that all Forest Service state, or is there?
It's all state, that first uh, all that first section's all state, yeah.
Dave, uh, do you wanna, you have to come to the mic, because nobody can hear you, do you wanna talk anymore about Warren Wagon or any of your concerns? I think uh, me, we're kind of in progress there, trying to get more acres in there to get them built, it's gonna take a year or two more, but in the meantime, we gotta figure out a way to handle these special event where they're pa- parking on Warren Wagon, and, and I know I talked to you here last week about, I think we need to possibly start funding an LEO just for weekends and for that kinda work, but it needs to be a legitimate deputy that has authority and can write tickets and enforcement and all that stuff. And I think we need to kinda go that direction. I hate to be hard, hardcore on our tourists that come up, because it's really not their fault that the place is full, it's just somehow we gotta reach a middle ground here, but I would appreciate any input you had on it.
What I sent you guys um, on the email and stuff, it's, it's, I'm just letting you know what's going on and
About other parking areas besides?
Same thing.
Who, who, where would you say is your worst ones besides Francie Wallace?
I heard Anderson Creek's a mess on the weekends, um, I, I haven't been up there, I just know I was up at Francie Wallace that, for that uh, fun run, and it just happened to be on the tail end of two life flights out of there two days prior, and a couple fadals up there, and we have attorneys here taking photos of helmets and sleds, and it's it's a matter of time before we start getting wrapped up in all that with this injuries, and if we haven't, you know, uh, even with one of the plane wrecks this summer, they wanted to know why our response time took so long to get there. Stuff, people were poking around, yeah, so.
Well, isn't there a spot now, kind of at the trailhead, that's blocked off for parking, where you guys could?
You gotta get to it.
And it's getting past all the cars to get up there.
Yeah, we used it the other, uh, for the one fatal we had up there off of uh, Copet Creek, but um, you've gotta be able to get to it. And um, there's, if there's a car coming, if there's a truck or trailer coming looping out of Francie Wallace to head back down the road to park alongside the road, it's not gonna happen. Not gonna get there.
And there's no pullouts anywhere, really?
No.
And that really could happen to a rafter or a four-wheeler, I mean, any time of the year, not just snowmobiling, but I don't know how to handle it, I mean, we've
It's, it's really, I was gonna say, it's really tough up there on the, some, some of the bigger weekends, you know, like you're talking about, where you've got one lane of traffic, you've got people coming and going with big trailers and trucks and wide sled decks, and then the snowmobilers trying to boogie up and down the road around the cars.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a nightmare up there, but it's just a few weekends, you know, I mean, the problem is, is in my mind, and I know that you guys have tried, but we really need some law enforcement on site, those early morning hours from like eight to ten, you know, just to stand there and say, hey, this is no parking, you can see the sign. You know, if we, we don't wanna get to the point where we're writing tickets for everybody up there.
Would it help if we had somebody there that says, Francie Wallace is full, you gotta go down and park in Brush Creek? Or you park on the road? Would that help?
You know, I floated it by that, you know, maybe McCall should have some skin in the game, too, and, and they've got reader boards that they can put up down at Lardo's and say lots are full, and they don't even come up Warren Wagon if those lots are full. There's no reason for them to come up Warren Wagon.
That's a great idea.
So um, you know, and, and if they do come up there, then but at least it gives them, they don't drive all the way to the top of Warren Wagon, have to turn around and come back out.
I like the idea of the camera, you know, I think we can expand on that, like Larry has up at the upper elevation. No, not even enough if we had a solar or battery bank or.
How far away is the power, probably three, four miles? Six miles?
They were actually um, stacked up at Brush Creek, right at the mouth of both driveways side by side, and there was really just one lane to get into that, that's how crowded, and then they were parked all the way down at the bus turnaround. And that picture I took, um, I probably had thirty sleds past me as I was trying to get out of there coming head-on at me. So it's
When you just hit the light.
But, yeah, it's
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind, and I don't know if it's gonna help much, but we're in the process of Idaho County to annex all of that area into Valley County, so there may be some higher revenues come in, lease on property taxes on some of that, but I don't know how we can dig some of that money out to use it for expansion or doing anything different, but.
I, I, I think that problem up there is we're policing Idaho's, Idaho County's problem.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
But they're all going to Idaho County for the, you know, probably, um, I don't know what percentage, but there's a lot, there's a big percentage that just go to Bird Dorf and hit, hit the stage stop and hit the bomb shelter and come back, and that's their loop for the day. And uh, you know, we tried, Idaho County got ahold of us a couple months ago, wanted to do a DUI enforcement up there um, in the coming weeks, and we never heard again from them, and we were all in. It's like absolutely, we, you know, we gave them three people and, and equipment, and never heard back from them again, so they're really hard to work with also.
Well, and I think it, you, you know, you look at it, it should be Valley County's issue, I mean, it's, it's, it's really on our side of the river, so to speak, and I don't know why they didn't do it that way years ago, but I'm really glad that those commissioners are receptive of, hey, why don't you guys annex this, because we can't, we don't have the staff or money or time to even deal with the roads, let alone the rest of it, so.
I talked to um, McCall Fire Chief on his issues, and he has the same concerns. And I guess at one point, I don't know how, whether it was this year or last year, he ended up, uh, he, he attempted to bill Idaho County for one of their responses, and they told him, we're not paying, we didn't ask you to go up there. And he's like, okay.
So honestly, I don't know if they have the funds to pay it.
Yeah, that's
You know, even though they're the largest county in Idaho, it's like
I think that we're also gonna have to help our Sheriff's Department and the first responders to make sure that they have the team in place to be able to get there. I know there's concerns, we're taking that on, Dave. I think we need to make sure you guys have the resources that you will need, and so maybe it's identifying what those property taxes are gonna be, and making sure we can cover what our extra costs are gonna be.
Yeah, it, and the commissioner has a good point, you know, I, I tried to relay that with this recent article in the paper, is if we have a, if we have a rescue up there, we only have two deputies working the road most of the time. That means we either gotta scramble a couple and get them up there, or take the two on, the two that are working, send them up there and find somebody to backfill, it, it's not a, it's a pretty big task for us to get up there to get people help.
Dave, one of the things I was mentioning, too, is, you know, I think that there's funding available, like, I don't know if we could talk about the RAC funds, you know, even potentially like, trying to set those guys up with the right tools they need for the job, is Title III, you know, some of the infrastructure money is going towards recreation, and I, I think that there's money that you guys could explore to just have two dedicated recreation employees at this point, I mean, we're at that point where we need it.
Yeah.
And I
And that's something you, you guys could do a little research and start working with Marion.
I think we need to build that into our budget, so it's funded every year, not rely on a grant or RAC. We gotta have solid funding behind that.
Okay.
I mean, we can use RAC for all the parts and pieces that we need.
Yeah, we've got, it, it's really the personnel, we've got a good start, you guys have been generous on the equipment and stuff, we may need a few more pieces of equipment, but it's really the personnel that you know, getting, getting them trained up and getting them up into those areas that um, people need help.
So Dave, how do you look at that? Do you look at that as like a part-time? I'm gonna say recreation deputy, or would you use them part-time there, and then the rest of the time covering normal sheriff stuff?
Well, I, it would be, we, we Well, it would be, we, we wouldn't send a single deputy into the back country, so it'd be minimum of two that we'd wanna to get on board, and we could use them both shoulder seasons, they could work the road, and then, you know, summer on the boats and, and in the back country. I'm not just talking the boats, that, you know, the back country needs to be patrolled in the summer too. And then, I'm not fond of sending a single person out into the back country to do enforcement actions in the summer. It's just not safe. And then winter time, the same thing, just for safety reasons and, and, and then have them on sleds and stuff in the, in the winter time. And, you know, out on the lake, the ice fishermen and wherever we need them in the winter. But I think two people would be the minimum that we could really be effective with and safe.
I think that'd be a start.
And, and maybe, Doug, this is a question for you, but how do you want them to handle that? Do you want that just to be in their budget or because there will be equipment and salaries included? Do you want them to do a CIP application and put it through that committee?
No, I, I don't think a CIP would be appropriate for this, but I, I do think that, you know, the, the process would be to creation of the positions with HR and then bringing those to the commissioners for ultimate vetting or approval during the budget session, but I don't think it needs to go through, that would be my opinion. I don't think it needs to go through the Capital Improvement Group.
We, we've, you know, the new schedule, go ahead.
No, but I guess for potentially some of the equipment, it would, if there's gonna be, you know, new patrol vehicles, of course, Commissioner Mop and those, those would, but for the actual positions, I think, start with HR and the commissioners.
I'd have to talk to Kevin. I think Kevin's getting a new truck, his old truck would probably do for a couple of years for those guys to ride around in. We've adjusted our schedule, and, and one example was we, we can now deploy heavily on fun run night, days and stuff like that. We just have haves and needs, and so that schedule for the DUI enforcement we're gonna do with Idaho County was bumped up to, I think, we were having five deputies work that Saturday, and we never heard back from them, so we canceled them off, and they can either still work or take the day off. So we've tried, we do have the capability of adjusted schedules now and, and deploying heavily on when we know that there's a planned event out there, it's the unplanned stuff that catches us, that we can't plan for on personnel. But we've kind of adjusted that way to where the fun runs and stuff like that is, is pretty much we, we put five people on those days and start sending them out into the back country and stuff.
So my feeling honestly, Dave, is for you guys in the Sheriff's Department, go ahead and work with HR, start building the job descriptions and the salaries and all that stuff, and then get it to us before budget for next year.
Okay.
And then think about equipment that you might need. That's my feeling. I know this is not an action item, so we can't vote, but I think that's gonna handle a lot of these issues.
I can put something together and give you guys an idea of what we're thinking and figure it out from there.
I got one more quick question about parking stuff for you is, have you guys had any complaints or any calls about like Silver Fox Trail or Boulder, Patty or Potter, any of those little roads that people are parking on? I know that.
No.
Okay.
Not this year. Silver Fox has been quiet. Well, for parking.
Yeah.
Other than that, we, we've been getting calls up there, but parking wise, we haven't heard from the homeowner at all down off of that road. Everything's quiet that I know of for parking, other than the snowmobile lots. And, and, you know, the Clear Creek and everything else, yeah, it's probably a great trail. People aren't going there because the stage stop, the bomb shelter and Byrd Dorf isn't, aren't up there. You know, locals like it because it's nice and quiet and I'm with them on that, but.
Access to high elevation riding too, it just doesn't have it right there.
Yep. Yep.
And I think Larry, we need to work on the East Mountain, back to Packer John. Let's start working on getting, see what we can do to get that back. Because if we want to start grooming into Warm Lake and all that, I can see all that system coming online.
Yep, and next year, because of the increase in the tag sales, we'll have some more money to do that. And just to, to follow up on Warren Wagon Road, on the big weekends from now on, we are going in, we did it this last weekend, it worked real well. We got two signs that says pullout, no parking, and we're taking red paint and marked it. And this, not this next weekend, but the weekend after, when they have the crab feed, they volunteered two people out of Warren. They're gonna come up and help us mark them all, have pullouts all the way up. And we also widened the road for, by about five feet. These guys were actually off into the Barrow pit. I was watching the temperatures because if it would have really warmed up, there might have been some tow trucks out there.
I just wonder how many more years will be before we have law enforcement on snowmobiles issuing speeding tickets on some of these places.
You know, and I was thinking about, the DUI thing really concerns me too, and I, if there's, we, we put a couple of signs out last year about riding is the same as driving and stuff like that, and those signs disappeared within, oh gosh, maybe two days. I'll see if I can pick up some more signage about that because we don't have enough warning some of the people about that, that issue. And I'll see what I can do about that.
Well, it's even worse if they come back loaded on a big giant truck with a big giant trailer, then drive back to Boise or wherever.
Yeah, education is so huge and, and we do, I think we can do better at that.
Okay, so everybody, we kinda got a plan. I think that Larry, you guys can work with the state, and I can talk to the state too, Scott, about maybe trading some grounds, see if they're receptive to some of that. And I can work on that end, and maybe you guys, Dave or somebody can look at, look Creek because I don't know that area. See if there's state land there that we can maybe trade some county ground for or lease or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, just for the meeting minutes, can I just make sure that I captured everything? I have Stonebreaker, Boulder Creek, Anderson Creek, Lick Creek, Big Sage Campground, Patty Flat, Clear Creek, Turkey Track, Sugarloaf, areas on Old State Highway, areas on Warren Wagon Road, Francie Wallace and Brush Creek.
I would say Old State Highway south because there is north too.
Anything I?
Anything else, anybody? Did Doug get them all?
I just sent a updated ARPA document, and Doug, there's not all of that on that document, so you may, if there's any funding mechanism that's gonna be required, we may want to put that on that ARPA document.
Okay, we got about two more minutes until our next agenda item, which is the American Rescue Plan Workshop. Need a break, this would be a great time. Thanks everybody for your input.
Yeah.
You're not dragging a trailer.
Jeff, where's the best place to buy a flatbed now? Where's the best place to buy a flatbed now? Quality trailer? We, I used to go to that Canyon Truck Uplifters out there by Parma, and they, awesome flatbeds, and they weren't too bad. But then Campbell Tractor bought them. I don't, I don't even know if they sell retail anymore.
Yeah, Riverside seems to, right now, everybody's, if they have any, almost doubled in price in the last year.
Really? Yeah, the one I bought for my old Dodge was 3,600, specially made for the truck, and they built it right onto the frame. No, and you know, those frames now are all different heights, so they gotta, but it, it was a nice, but then I traded it in, got this new truck and. I've already dinged up the tailgate in it, backing into stuff, so yeah.
People buy brand new pickups and go out to utility trailer. They, they buy the pickup, they take the utilities, they put a flatbed on it. Utility's got all these brand new pickup beds sitting out there, nobody buys them.
Somebody wants them, huh?
Insurance companies, body shops, won't go buy a used one, they'll go buy a new one, even others are buying new ones.
Probably get a good deal on a tailgate maybe, huh? Okay. Our next agenda item is not an action item, this is kind of a general discussion on ARPA funds and a workshop. And, and Sherry, I appreciate the list that you sent out and the energy to go in and put it together. I guess my, see if I can find it here, my only concern, not really a concern, where is it? Is you kinda had a list.
I just sent you a new one, just a few minutes ago.
Order, but was recycling? And I think anything to do with recycling or solid waste, we should just use those funds for that because we can tax for that or we can charge for those, you know, the household fees and that kind of stuff and keep that separate money from ARPA. I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's, I think we got that funding already covered if we need to go that direction.
I would agree with you on that. That was something that came up as part of the list last week, but I would agree with you on that.
Um, did you guys get specific on the recreation investments or is that just a general category? Like parking lots or ground for parking lots or what were you guys thinking of there?
Eld, I was trying to take notes as you guys were talking on that document, and I just sent you a new document in the last 10 minutes. Um, so Doug had a much more thorough list. But that was, you know, that was my thoughts is we've been talking about investments in recreation as far as like the Clear Creek Campground. Lick Creek, Warren Wagon, Francie Wallace, if that takes anything, or Brush Creek, investing in those types of things. And also additional infrastructure for summer camping and winter recreation.
That was what I was gonna say too, is I think like adding to the list that you had is, you know, adding bathroom facilities and, you know, kiosks that explain where you are, you know, we were talking about that at the Winter Rec Forum last week is that, you know, we need some, some better signage that say, hey, you know, there's areas that are closed over here or, you know, parked this way over here, but having bathroom facilities at some of these trailheads would be really important, I think.
So just add kiosks, bathroom facilities.
I think you could just say recreation infrastructure.
Yeah, just infrastructure. What are those bathrooms called, Dave? I was trying to think.
They're the CXTs.
CXTs, thank you very much.
I think they're about $30,000 right now for a two-door.
When I looked out for the fairgrounds with the showers and all that, I think was closer to 60,000 if I remember right.
So Sherry, I've got a list that you sent last week, and then I've got the one that you sent this morning. Is there another list that has more stuff on it?
No.
Okay.
That's, you know, my understanding was you guys just wanted a quick synopsis of what we discussed last week, and then I, this is what this ARPA meeting today is about, is kind of flush it out more. And then I've also got McKenzie listening in for recommendations on how to get information out to the public and what we want to do as a marketing plan to get input back.
Kind of like a, a survey?
Yeah, a survey, you know, postcard, that was a great idea. Send out to everybody and send them back to our website with a survey on it. But, you know, just give some, I don't know how broad you guys want to go in the recommendations or how detailed we want to get with the public or, you know, just give them some basic ideas and let them respond to those.
Um, you know, that's a good question because I feel like we need to kind of narrow it down to, I don't know, five or six or whatever. And then, as we know what we need, the public doesn't really understand all of that. We know where we're short, like in the recreation areas, and the public, maybe they don't see that. They know about the fairgrounds, they know about, you know, some of the road, the road department, some of those other issues. And then let them come in and say, this is, you know, a rating, this is my number one, number two, number three, or something like that. Later on down on the, on the, just at the end of the day, 11:20, I put on there a discussion on broadband. And you have broadband on this list, and I've, my only concern on the broadband was how, how is this gonna work if the county owns that line? Are we gonna build a department that has guys that hook up people and fix it? Or what is your plan there? Because I, I think we need to kind of get that resolved before we go too deep into that and then end up owning a broadband area. I don't, I don't know what we're thinking about there, so that's why that's on there, and we could delve that into this discussion now as well.
Yeah, whenever you want to talk about it, but no, the plan is never to have the county own it. And it goes in conjunction with the new legislation that's being passed by the state that dig once. So we can discuss it then or now or what, but.
So can you explain that to me, Sherry? Is that a grant that we would get to basically have the fiber optic installed? Say from McCall to Smith Ferry, for example, and then we would sell that line or the rights to that line to somebody else or who repairs it, who fixes it, who, who adds on the customers? I don't know how that part works.
And now there might be time to get the broadband committee to come in and do a full presentation so we're all on the same page. But basically, so what the conversation is right now is the Port of Lewiston actually is an entity that can own infrastructure and run it as a governmental agency. And they are actually working with all of the 911 centers throughout the state right now to do a collaborative effort to make sure that 911 has redundancy throughout the state. So they are presenting to the Adams County Commissioners next Monday about a line coming from the Port of Lewiston clear to Adams County and connecting an east, a north-south connection point. But we are trying to be in conversation with them also, that they don't stop in Adams County, but they connect to Valley County and bring it through us also. And so what our portion of it is, is, well, first of all, there's an MOU that is probably gonna be ready hopefully by next week, if not the week after, to bring for a discussion. But what that is, is that it's a broadband task force, if you will, a broadband committee for Valley County and the West Central Mountains, which would include New Meadows. And that task force would drive the conversation about how to bring, the best ways to bring broadband into Valley County. What this group is hopeful to do is to be able to write grants and receive a portion of that $200 million that the state is setting aside for broadband to bring it into this area. But that would be in collaboration with other partnerships. But that would be in collaboration with um, other partnerships, there is a nonprofit that does this work. There's also some of the internet service providers we could partner with. We would never do the delivery of service, we would just lease that space on that line. But there are partners that would actually participate in taking care of that line. Valley County and the cities have no interest in being an ISP.
So knowing that, that you're looking at other grants from the state and all that stuff, should broadband be on this ARPA list at all?
We will need grant match funds. So yes, if we want to improve our broadband in this area, we are gonna have to set aside some funds to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough question. I was gonna say, do you have an idea what those would be? Like a million dollars or half a million dollars or what?
I don't yet, Eld, and that's, um, right now there's uh, an engineering plan that is supposed to be to that broadband committee and what that does is it lays out every single connection in Valley County. Uh, when we hired Entry Point, their entire, uh, what we hired them to do was facilitate a plan. What would it cost moving forward? Um, what, what that whole participation looks like, they are supposed to have that plan done for us by March, by the end of March. So then they will come in and present to everybody and say, this is what we're gonna need, this is how we're gonna get there. Um, so I, I don't have that number yet, but by the end of March, we should have from Entry Point. There's also, I was contacted by Image Idaho yesterday, which Christina Culver is a um, they have a nonprofit, it's a lobbyist firm, I believe. But they do data management for broadband. And the state is going to be participating in what's called crowdsourcing. And crowdsourcing, it's, it's software, which people can actually go into and answer a survey and say, I don't have any broadband, or I have broadband, it's only this much speed. And the more people that we have that are underserved, the more opportunities there are for grant funding. Well, the state is not quite ready to pull the trigger yet on this crowdsourcing software. So there are gonna be ten communities that Imagine Idaho buys this for. And it will cost us nothing to participate. And we will need this information to do grant writing. So um, I was gonna ask you guys if you guys are okay if we sign up with it at no expense to the county. I mean, it's a huge get for no outlay at all.
Well, I think it's certainly important to know not only what we need, but what we have and what we don't have, so that to me seems pretty important. I guess my only concern would be that, you know, you know, we have quite a, two more years, Doug, to spend ARPA funds, so we're gonna have this information way before we probably have the information on some of the other things on the list so that um, we may decide to fund that from, from the PILT or something else. Um, if, if there's a match needed for broadband, so we'll, we'll know that information ahead of time. But I think as far as signing on with this company to, to do a survey of what we have and what we need, I think that's appropriate. Especially if it's no cost to us, I think that's great.
Okay, and as far as broadband, Eld, this is one thing that's specifically called out with these ARPA funds as, this is where they want you to be spending money here. So our PILT, I mean, housing is a different that, that one's gonna be more hard to prove, as so is like the road department stuff. I guess it doesn't matter now that they've taken all the parameters off, anything under ten million dollars, we can spend on whatever we want. Um, so yeah, but that does, that definitely needs to be part of the conversation. If we want to improve broadband in this area, we are gonna have to help fund some of that.
I, I agree, I think um, we're going down the right trail. I just didn't want the county end up being a, in a utility business where we have a whole nother department that, of trucks and labor and guys that fixes stuff and do that and I, sounds like you've kind of been thinking about that. Um, the other, what I want to make is, what I like about, we can narrow it down to four or five or six things and then go out with the survey and let the public pick what they think is important. I think will help us a lot down the road politically if we go ahead and go in that direction. Does that make sense?
Yes. So as far as looking at some of these other areas, you know, housing is a huge issue here. Could we use some of these ARPA funds? For what my thought was, is try and partner with, like on our property there in Cascade. Um, not only work with a developer and, and uh, work with them on either leasing or donating that ground, but maybe paying water and sewer hookups on that, just to try and keep costs down. Um, that would be one way to spend it under housing, that I think would be a one-time expenditure. What do you guys think about that idea?
I don't know, I guess my only concern about using the property close to the jail and the stuff we got is that we're down the road, you know, twenty years from now, if we want to expand the, an annex of the courthouse, say for any department, we don't have that ground to do that anymore. Um, I don't, you know, we gotta think about you know, twenty appraisers or, you know, a bigger DMV. We don't know how that's gonna work out, if the state's gonna take that over yet or not, but um, if we committed it to housing, we're kind of stuck with that. I think our big issue right away, that's kind of coming to us pretty fast, is where are we gonna put, you know, extension and 4H and all of that kind of stuff. And I think, you know, that to me should be probably one of our first concerns is to look at a place, long-term lease or purchase or building or something so that we can have that done. I was just reading last week, I think it was in uh, one of the emails I got that they're going to expand the senior center up here that is now a community center. And they're gonna put in some, some kind of a, uh, area for the youth of Cascade and it's gonna be games, I'm, I'm guessing, and tables and that kind of stuff and um, and it's gonna be more of a community center, which I think is great. But that would also been a great spot to move 4H and extension and that into that north side of that facility as well, so that opportunity kind of took itself off the table, even though that's our facility.
Yeah, and I was part of a conversation also and I was surprised. I mean, YCAP is in there one to two days a week now, but St. Luke's McCall told me they're opening up a foot clinic in there one day a week. So we're definitely losing uh, any input into what happens there in the future.
Well, and I think what we ought to do honestly is maybe in Doug's spare time, he could look up that lease for that facility to the seniors and and actually kind of go through that and see if they can legally sublease some of that out. Um, it's not that I want to play hardball or anything with them and it's not that I'm against what they're doing, but you're absolutely right that that is a county facility and I think we should have some influence on it since we're the ones that are ensuring it and maintaining it and paying those bills, so um, that's a project.
Their ten-year lease is up next year, I think. We gave them a one-year or a one-dollar lease for ten years.
Right. And I think we need to go back and look at that lease, I don't know where it is, I've never seen it since I've been a commissioner, so we still have it or not.
Yeah, Doug had found it a little while ago.
Dollar amount that we're thinking that we're gonna get out of this. I know that it's changed a little bit over.
So the ARPA, we've already gotten one-point-one million, we will get another one-point-one million for certain. There's, I was sat on a call last week and the um, the SRS funding and PILTS that was approved through ARPA is on hold. There was a wording change that needed to happen for our three-year SRS funding. So that is going through legislation right now, we should hear more in the next couple of weeks on when those funds will be released. That does not have to be shared with the school districts, as they got their own. And it's supposed to be one and a half times of what our normal PILT payment would be, so that could be another I think, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but like a million-five that would come in this calendar year. They're gonna try and release those funds before fiscal year end in October.
At one in, hundred and fifty percent, what did we get, about seven-hundred thousand?
That's correct.
So it's about a million, little over a million dollars, I think, Sherry, it'd be closer, but that's really good news, I hope it happens. It should be fourteen million or eight million like it used to be thirty years ago, but.
Yeah, so Doug, that seven-hundred thousand though, that, that's after we share with the school districts, correct?
Uh, we were talking two different things. If PILT we don't share, SRS we do.
So what is our SRS payment before we have to share it?
We don't share, uh, uh, hang on, uh, so bear with me one moment.
It doesn't matter, it's just good news. We're gonna get additional funding there.
Um, don't you guys kind of feel like, you know, the SARPA funds, we're gonna use it kind of all over the place, it's not all gonna go to one or two different things, I think we've got to kind of spread it out, but I'm really interested to see what the public says, if they come out really strong for broadband or really strong for moving the road department or whatever. Then I think we really need to take that to heart when we make that decision to spend those dollars. Um, and I think there's gonna be some things that we haven't been thinking about that might come from the public that, oh yeah, that's probably something we should. You know, like this community center, it's all of a sudden, it's kind of exploded right in our face and and, which is great, at least we're getting some use out of the facility, but um, there might be something else, we just don't know yet.
And the fairground and, oh, sorry.
Our, our payment last year was one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Almost one-point-four million.
Oh, so. And that gets, that gets split up. That's correct. Twenty or thirty percent goes to the school. And then Title III and then the county.
So my understanding from this call is we will not be dividing this up, we will get a hundred and fifty percent of that at, that will come directly to us, is a one-time get off the ARPA.
Well, that's about two-point-one million if I figured it right in my head. Wow.
Yeah, it's substantial. So we will wait and hear back on that. There's some legislative cleanup and Crepo and Widener both working on that legislative cleanup, so didn't think there was gonna be any hesitations, but the way it was written, we would have gotten a twenty percent reduction in this calendar year uh, on SRS. And they don't want that to happen, so they're trying to clean up that language. So we get the full hundred percent for the next three years.
And I think that's great. The other issue that I'm concerned about and it doesn't really affect ARPA SRS is the bill that was introduced um, last week in Idaho Legislature dealing with our property taxes. And I think Seth has a call tomorrow that we all should probably be on. Cause that could be pretty detrimental. I know you know, I sent you guys the one that Terry Guestron is doing on our our moratorium and our lots subdivision process and that one could hurt us too, not maybe so much financially, but um, we kind of got to see where we're gonna be with budget too as well um, by fall. I don't know why those guys are so mean to counties, but they sure are.
Yeah, agreed. Um, so on the ARPA, I'm gonna put the fairground investments is part of the road department investment. Because that would actually change that entire area.
I think that's okay, the only thing is I want to hear from the fair what they want.
Sure.
You know, still have them put together a plan if they want a, you know, a sixty-by-a-hundred building for arena or whatever they, you know, I think that needs to be on that list, but it's certainly gonna affect all of that piece of ground down there. Uh, the other thing that, that to consider is maybe we end up taking the road department office and converting that to, to 4H and extension as well, and so there'll be some funds needed there to remodel that facility and clean it up and there's a lot of buildings that I think we'd have to tear down or take down and there's gonna be a cost there.
And I, I think, I, I kind of agree with you, Eld, as I was thinking the same thing, as I was thinking when we are looking at what we're gonna do with that whole piece of property down there is keeping a piece of that for future office expansion.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I do not think that we should get rid of that entire piece of property or turn it into 4H, or excuse me, uh, fairgrounds. I think we, we, we do need a little strategic reserve down there.
Yep, I agree a hundred percent. More so than using the ground here, I would rather use that ground there for employee housing. To me, that makes more sense down there, I love that idea. Here, I think it's gonna shoot us in the foot and twenty years from now, we need to build a bigger facility for just appraisers or whatever. You know, I know there's a lot of folks that want to tear it down the north end of this building and that would be a huge expense, not only to tear it down, but to replace it, so um, just keep that in back of our mind.
So Sherry, thinking about your list that you've got and, you know, what we've just talked about is what do you, what do you kind of see as the next steps as far as prioritizing those pieces? And then when would we take this out to the public as far as like a survey?
So I guess I'm still not a hundred percent clear on exactly the five items we would want to highlight. And once we solidify that, maybe we need a little longer work session to do that.
Sure.
Uh, then we would work with McKenzie and have her design a plan to get that out. Uh, a survey out and and that, I think that's our next step, is getting a survey completed and host uh, not only a workshop during the day, but maybe one in Donley and one in McCall also, just to get this information out.
So Sherry, are you okay with taking off the recycling off the list, though?
Yep, I am.
I would almost just leave it on, but bump it to a lower priority category maybe? Because if we do have the expenses that we're talking about, I mean that is gonna be something that we might want to look at, I mean, it's gonna depend on the funding and what we end up having available, but you know, like I said, I mean, that could be a lower priority category maybe.
And I think we need to do a full review of what's already in there because we were looking at a new rate study because we thought we had quite a lot of reserve. So I would want a little more information on where we're at right now with what we're living for and what is being spent on.
You're talking about the road department, or you're talking about fairgrounds?
Recycling.
And she's talking about recycling, solid waste and recycling.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we also, I put on there, there was con- uh, conversation, there's ongoing conversation about the comprehensive plan update. And, you know, I'd want to engage the Planning and Zoning Commission, but you know, a facilitator for that could be a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars. But that would impact um, everything moving forward and we are, we are definitely getting a large call to do that.
I think that would move up very high in priority on my list.
You know, honestly, we did this years ago. We looked at it anyway, we never really actually did, it was a comp plan update and I think at that time is around two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. And we were trying to figure out where to take that out and we ended up oh, yeah. It seemed to me like we ended up taking that out of either PILT or General Fund Reserve. At the end of the year, when we knew we had, we weren't gonna need that money, we went ahead and budgeted that towards this study. So to me, maybe what we want to think about is using a different source of funding instead of ARPA. I think we can do it, but I just don't know if it's appropriate to use ARPA funds for it.
So I'm thinking of ARPA as a one-time investment.
Right.
Those things that only, you know, we don't have to plan for moving forward. And our general fund to me is our operations fund. So that's just kind of the way I've been looking at this, what are the one-time off things that we can do to move projects forward? Without having continual investment into it. Um, but that's just the way I've been thinking of it, so.
Okay, we're uh, we're out of time. Um, let's, let's try and schedule another one of these workshops here in a couple of weeks and kind of regroup the list. I like your idea of putting the fairgrounds in with the road department, we can make that all road department slash fairgrounds investment. And make that one, I think that, that's appropriate. We'll pull off recycling and then we'll kind of chew on the rest of it and look at other issues. Uh, maybe we want to wait till like March, when you'll know more on broadband and where we are on that. What do you think of that?
Probably have, yeah, I think that's a great idea and have more information on uh, any other additional ARPA funding. And then Soil and Water District is in for the management plan today. And then Soil and Water District is in for the management plan today. Uh, what do you guys think about? Well, after we have that, we may want to discuss trying to fund some of that to get it kicked off too. But um I will send out this updated list and you guys add, subtract, and just let me know what you want to change.
That's good. Thank you.
We're gonna move on down. Our next item is an action item. This is the approval of the Emergency Services Managers Agreement. And Juan, appreciate you coming in. This is just an annual renewal of your contract, I'm assuming.
The contract has been updated, so I hope we have a chance to.
I can't hear anybody unless they're at the mic, guys.
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic or she can't hear you, please. Did that come out to us, Doug?
It did.
Shoot, I'm sorry, I haven't read it.
There is a difference. There is a difference with contract because it was updated by um the prosecutor. So it went from like a page and a half to like six pages.
What were the main changes? I, I mean.
They were.
Without comparing the two, I don't know what they were.
Um, they were just more detailed. You go ahead because you know, you did the changes. I agree with it.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, the consequence of sending these contracts for me to review usually is an addition of three or four, three or four boilerplate language. Uh, my my goal in updating this agreement wasn't to make any material changes to what Juan does for on behalf of the county as the emergency manager, just to standardize our agreements to make sure we have the same basic boilerplate um uh understandings uh with with all of our with all of our agreements. So I think what you have in front of you is the same as what you've always had, but with more clarification on uh insurance requirements, independent contractor relationship between the county and and Juan. There was a reference in the original agreement to an Exhibit A, which was going to be the uh, I guess, the work plan, if you will. Uh, we couldn't find that. So what is in this Exhibit A is the i- i- is the only thing we could find, which was um, I think, a a position description, which is which is really pretty close to what uh I I think a work plan should be is the basic uh requirements of an emergency emergency planner. Uh, it sounds like in listening to Juan, he was he was okay with the updated changes there. Uh, like I said, uh, what what he has been doing on behalf of the county in prior years, I don't uh, I I don't believe and didn't intend for those to change going forward. Um, but wanting to standardize agreements, make sure that uh all of our contracts and MOUs with any contractor will look similar uh to the others. So any questions, I'm happy to answer if you've got any.
Um, I don't have any questions, Brian. I appreciate you looking at the contract. Um, I don't see it. So when you get a chance, could you maybe send it to me or Juan? I don't know where it is.
It was in our. It's in the packet.
Yeah.
It's in the packet, but I don't see the um, the addendum A, Brian.
Ex- uh, Doug was Exhibit A or Attachment A included.
That was Friday.
Yeah, I I would draw your attention to that more than anything else uh as far as changes go because that's what you're gonna be seeing Juan uh do throughout the next uh, throughout the next uh year is is those tasks that are outlined in in Attachment A of the agreement.
Hey, everybody good with moving forward with this?
I'm fine with moving forward, but I'd like to see Attachment A. We don't really know.
I I've only got two from Friday, so I don't know where mine went.
Give me one second.
Yeah, the copy that we got just said be mutually, it said in parentheses, to be agreed upon.
Right, so uh Chairman, um, one thing is is nothing's changed over the last three years now, so it's still the same job description. Um, there will be some changes that come from Idaho Office of Emergency Management that we'll have to discuss because it's further education and things like that. But that is still in the deciding factor, and when that's gonna be determined, it could be a couple of years out from my OEM. I will tell you, I meet about ninety-eight percent of those already, so I'm not too concerned about those changes.
So if you do have to go for any training, I'm assuming the county would pay those costs for you, though.
Most of it's online.
Oh, is it online?
So.
Well, this is a contractor. We can't pay his expenses or he becomes an employee.
It won't be a big deal.
Good point. Thank you. Hey, any more questions? If not, an entertaining motion to approve the new emergency manage services manager agreement.
I move to approve the twenty twenty, is it twenty twenty-three? Sorry, I don't have the agenda.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three emergency management agreement with Juan Monia.
I'll second that.
I'm just taking a look now. The same money, okay? Hey, we have a motion to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And I want to say, Juan, thank you for all your help on all the emergencies we've had. It's been nice not to have to worry about that, honestly.
Thank you.
I need to sign that as well.
I give these to you still. Looks pretty sharp today, mister. Cleaned up pretty well.
Trying to uh.
You want a blue one?
Oh, yeah.
There's no rush. We have you have another seven, eight minutes, so don't worry.
Might get a copy of that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, have a great day. We got about six more minutes, and then we'll move on to you guys next. So if you need a potty break or need a breather, now's the time. Oh, did you write this job description or did you find this somewhere? This is phenomenal.
No, I didn't write it.
Oh.
My only question about all that, I I know it's a contractor. Do we not have to put that out for bid? I've just always been curious about that. I mean, I love Juan, so don't get me wrong, but is there any anything that we have to put out a contractor or a contract for bid?
Uh, if it exceeds fifty thousand is kind of the the fiscal threshold. There's some other statutory requirements that I'd have to go back and and review. Um, I think going forward, that's that's a valid question that we need to we need to discuss, even if it falls below the requirements there. Uh, and I've been talking about this with the department heads as well. Putting putting an issue out for bid or a service or a contract out for bid gives us the opportunity in the bid documents to say, here are the standard contract terms that we're gonna require and don't submit a proposal unless you agree to them. So it gets, it gives us a chance. It's much easier for us to do that instead of of having a salesperson come, say, we've got the next best shiny service that we can provide, and here's our here's our standard contract that that is taken weeks and sometimes months to 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 iron out. So um I think you're gonna be hearing a little bit more about that from me as well. I'll have maybe a checklist for the required bid terms uh or uh uh put together checklist of those things that are would be required to put out for bid. Uh, so you've got that in your hip pocket. You can make sure that we're doing that when uh when the statute requires us to.
And I know too that there's some stuff in code that talks about you can do ten-year contracts with like solid waste and then other functions you can do up to five-year contracts. And so maybe some research on those two, Brian, as far as uh emergency matter. I know I have had people contact me that were interested in our um, I don't know what you call Stephanie Nelson, but that position to do for the county as well. And um we've never really bid that out because Steph was the one that actually got the grant and was has been with the county for since before I started, ten years or so, that had done that function.
Okay.
And managed those contracts with landowners and and spent that money that way through the state. But I've had people ask, well, can anybody do that job? Can anybody bid? And I don't know that answer, so.
Yeah.
Um, the other one is our Public Information Officer, McKenzie. She's a contractor also.
Yeah, so we need to take a closer look at that. Uh, last week, you uh heard me say I'd be working on a cover sheet for contracts. Maybe this is something we can add to the cover sheet. Uh, is it required to go out to bid? Uh, did it go out to bid? Uh, that kind of thing. So I'm I'm close to done with that cover sheet. Probably present that to you next week. But uh I'll do a little bit more digging on some of these other outstanding questions and and resolve them and get them uh incorporated into that cover sheet going forward. So I think that'll be a uh an improved process, an internal process that will um help you as the board answer these types of questions. Just right there, I I want to have it at your fingertips on the uh as a cover sheet that all these issues have been reviewed and analyzed and resolved before it gets to you for for consideration, so.
But it it's really bizarre, but just for the general audience, most of our contracts, we have to renew every year annually. We can't do things longer than a year, except for a few things like solid waste. And so we renew a lot of contracts all the time.
Yes.
And some of them are pretty lengthy, and then Brian's been really great about coming in and looking at those current contracts beforehand. I want to add some language here, some liability issues or indemnification or whatever, and and made that process a lot faster for us because you would spend your days or your nights, I should say, all night reading these things before the week, trying to keep up with all of it. It's kind of nice to have somebody else's a backup. So thank you. Hey, everybody good? We're gonna move on down. Our next item is an action item. This is a presentation from Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. You guys are apparently asking for a letter of support. So Leonard, I guess I'll turn it over to you or John, whoever's up. And please come to the mic because Sheri can't hear you unless you're on the mic.
Maybe while we're waiting for Derina, I'll just give a little background on the grant. This is uh, what we're applying for is called a Cooperative Watershed Management Program Grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. The grant has a total of two hundred thousand dollars. It's available to put together a cooperative uh and diverse um group of people and also to do some strategic planning. The uh, one interesting thing about this grant, it does not have any cost sharing that's needed, so it is a hundred percent funded by the Bureau.
So Leonard, is this kind of like an old wag?
It's like an old wag. Um, actually, your history with a lot of this goes back uh into the nineties when there were a wag and technical advisory groups and also a council, a water council in the area, which I think you might have been a member of.
And then the bag, a basin advisory group as well. And I was on that for, I don't know, three or four years, and then EQ got their funding slo- slashed basically from the state and everything went.
Right. This is more like a uh council from the standpoint that it includes the entire watershed all the way from above Big Lake Payette all the way down to Ben. Yet, uh, banks, I'm sorry.
Okay, south fork, okay.
Right, right where the fork comes in.
Sure.
The other is um. Okay, I just went blank. That's one bad thing about getting.
That happens to me all the time. We are no rush, take your time.
I was gonna say, maybe it'll come back. Maybe tonight.
Probably. One of the things that I I want to point out, there's a lot of advantages of having this cooperative group. Um, we do have splitter groups out there right now that are trying to do things that um kind of overlap, and and hopefully this would pull some of that overlap together. But what this gives us an opportunity to do is actually leverage federal funding. Some of these other watershed uh grants go up to two million dollars, and in the future, because of some of the legislation in Congress, could go up to five million dollars. They're more on a cost shared either seventy-five or fifty percent basis. But our watershed needs money to do restoration-type projects and do planning. And and this would allow that, allow us to leverage that funding. We were told in a meeting back in the fall uh when we were looking at doing individual uh type smart grants, uh water smart grants, that we don't have as much of a chance of getting those grants unless we have a diverse group that backs them. So that's that's one of the main purposes here is to get that diverse group, do some strategic planning, and help get different kinds of of monies for irrigation districts and and people to do studies and and new pipeline projects, things of that nature. The other is uh the obvious benefit is that it helps the watershed resource restoration. Um, it'll provide information to support water managers and and water decision makers like yourselves. It'll uh provide the strategic planning I talked about. Also, it'll provide a network for various individuals. One of the things we're finding is in this uh area of people who are ex- who who qualify to get this money, they don't have the expertise to put together grants and to do these kind of programs on their own. I'll give you an example. Uh, South Lake Sewer District, I was at their board meeting on Friday night. But they're a prime example. They're they're good people. They want to do something. They don't know quite how to tap into money in any longer. They're different people than what were around back in uh two thousand when they when they did have potential grant uh funding sources. So forming this network will help those kind of entities get the federal funding. Um, and also it builds public confidence. Uh, there's a lot of people that see these health advisories and and things of that nature that are taking place in both Lake Cascade and then this year, the cautionary uh warning up in uh Big Lake Payette on the North Shore. And and this will help build confidence that things are getting done.
I think it's great. I think it's um, it's past time. I guess my frustration as we kind of went through this in the nineties and we had a lot of folks coming, we had some really strong people, and we were hoping to get Idaho Power on board with some of the generation inlet work stuff that they were. And everything was going great, and then we lost all of our funding and it just melted around us, so.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that happened is there there was some major changes that came out of the nineties and a lot of good work that was done. And the actual levels of phosphorus started dropping in in Lake Cascade. And when those levels started dropping and the funding dried up, there was a a wane of interest. And and now what's happened in about fifteen, sixteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, those phosphorus levels have been coming back up and and there's not as good trend in the data. It's pretty sporadic, but we still don't meet the uh the goals that were set uh to to keep uh Lake Cascade from being impaired. But but this is a watershed program. It's not just focused on on Lake Cascade and the different parts of the watershed, the lower part of the watershed, the upper part of the watershed, they have different issues. Some of them are the same, but they also have different issues. And hopefully um we can all work together to pare some of those issues out and come up with solutions.
And I I think this is great. You guys have the energy and the will to take this on. Um, I know at one time we got to the point where there was actual discussion about uh banning phosphate detergents up in this county that they couldn't be sold. And and we got pretty close, but we didn't get it done, and I wish we would have because I think that would have helped quite a bit too. But um banning phosphate fertilizer, ammonium phosphate was a big one. And uh I think that's kind of creeped back in.
It has, and and I think what. It has. And I think what you're alluding to is there is a need for educational programs. And, and this kind of a program that we're, we're talking about here today can come up with some of those educational programs and have funding to do things like that, to educate people. It's, it's not only the phosphate detergents, but we have septic systems, even though a lot of new subdivisions are going in with new septic tanks that are following the laws of the state. We still need to educate people on, on the fact that those septic systems leach nutrients into the aquifers, eventually get into the groundwater. And, and if we can educate people on not using harsh detergent, harsh cleaners and, and putting solvents down their septic systems and things of that nature, all, all that hopefully will come out of this type of a program.
Well, and I think the other issue that's pretty important is that maybe someday or pretty quickly, you guys will come up with a list of who's actually going to be on this because we have a lot of small groups out there, especially around Payette Lake, that have concern for their little areas. And I think those people need to pull, be pulled into the larger picture. So membership is important too, and keeping people involved. And there was a lot of years, a lot of meetings for me and driving to Boise to DEQ every month, do that. And it was enjoyable. I enjoyed it and it was, you know, a good learning experience for me.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. And, and the more diverse this coalition can be, the better it will be. Because we all learn from each other. And we actually have a lot of intelligent people up there in this county. And, and people that are willing to share information. And the more we can bring those people together, get different viewpoints and, and work around or get some consensus on where we can all agree. It's all extremely important into really making positive change.
Well, and if you get down to the point where you need somebody from Valley County to serve on that, I would certainly be willing to throw my name in. So keep that in mind if you get that far and we'll go from there.
Right.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions and this maybe should have been more than 15 minutes. No, so I'm curious because I think what you guys have done is amazing. I mean, like just the groundwork that's already gone into just the proposal is amazing, but one of the things I'm trying to figure out is like with our contract with Logan Simpson right now, and I know all of you guys have participated in that process through the tag and other things. How does this integrate with what they're going to put out and the work that they're doing right now? And then also reading through, you know, the application and the information that you guys would put together, I don't find any mention of that. So to me, I think there's an opportunity for you guys to say, look, a lot of this work has already been done. We're way farther ahead in this process than some of the other people who might be applying for the grant. So I'd really encourage you to put some of that information in there. But then like going back to the original question is, how do you guys see this integrating and kind of taking off from what Logan Simpson folks are going to turn out next fall?
I, I think there's a distinct difference, and that is what I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I see Logan Simpson's program being more policies for this organization to utilize. What we're putting together here is more technically based and not policy, not regulatory type of group. So we're doing, what, what we see is strategic planning for projects to bring funding in as opposed to putting any kind of policy together on how lakes operate or, or things of that nature.
I think the information that you guys are going to get and certainly, you know, some of the recommendations that we're going to get from Logan Simpson when they're finished, I think they're going to be really important for us to utilize as we make policy decisions. You know, so that's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm going with this is what's timeline and when, when do you think some of that information would be ready for us to use?
Well, the actual timeline on this grant is we, we would not get approval until next January.
Right.
And then the formation of the coalition will take about, well, about a year, really. I mean, there'll be an initial group that'll come together, but we have a program where we want to get everybody involved, like Idaho Power and, and water users down in the Boise area, as well as we, we really already have a lot of the water users up in this area on board. In regards to Logan Simpson, I think one of our next steps here this week is to actually.
I'd like to add something on that because I keep in contact with Christina.
Yep.
And forward documents to her consistently.
You've been really helpful. We appreciate it.
Yes, so she's aware of what we're doing. And I think I see this program as being able to fund some of the policies or the programs that they come up with. So this is a planning grant that will allow more funding to come into the county to do these different programs.
Well, and I was gonna say, because based on where we are with the process right now, I don't know if you've talked to Jen Zung or not, she's kind of the science coordinator for the project, and she's coming out with a list of, you know, key points and, you know, items that we need to find more information on. So, I mean, I think like where you guys could really be beneficial in this process is taking that list that they're identifying and saying, you know, we agree and we can help, you know, maybe fund studies or.
Yes, and there's, there's actually a grant open right now to fund studies, field resource grant. We did do this water smart workshop on last Monday, a week ago. And Jeff McFadden participated. There's several projects on West Mountain that were bigger than what we could cover with the 319s, and so these grants would cover that. We need to get Mary Rosen involved, so she would be writing the grants for Valley County, but there's.
And I, and I think we're going to have that kind of that discussion with Mary. I'm almost to the point where we may be looking at a second grant writer or maybe a part-time, because she's a pretty busy gal. But to kind of build on what some of Dave's points is, we learned this here a few years back when Gordon was on the board, we tried to restrict lake boats. And we just set a thousand foot, let's just say a thousand feet, and we got hammered because we didn't have the science to back up that policy. That's what I'm hoping will come from this group is that you guys have the study, you have the tack behind it, the data behind it to say, you know, anything that's in a half a mile from any water source should be sewered and not septic. And that's the kind of data and the strength we need in order to for those policies and those ordinance to hold up in court. That's, to me, is where we're going to have to go, I think, with a lot of this. We tell those folks that you can't sell phosphate laundry soap in Valley County. We're going to get hammered on that because we don't have any data saying why we did that. You see what I'm saying? So I think it's great that, you know, we're kind of starting over again, but we're way ahead this time. We've got, we kind of know which direction we want to go, so thank you, guys.
So are you familiar with the Little Salmon Collaborative?
Collaborative, I have not, no, we have not been.
I'll send you a link to that, that they are operating off of the same grant. So we actually applied for it at the same time. So I, I think that's a good one to look at the format. They've learned some things that they'll be able to benefit this group with. So I think we're in a really great position right now to take this on. And with additional infrastructure money that's coming into USBR for water smart, there's just time to move on some of these larger projects for the county.
Yep, I wish we could do something with South Lake, South Lake Sewer and Water. I wish we could get that through.
That's kind of a priority.
Yeah, it is. John, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, just so you know who I am, I'm John Littlehug. I'm one of the board supervisors. And I, just a clarification, the WAG district board is the WAG right now.
Okay.
And that's, we're operating through DEQ as that.
As a WAG.
Yeah, as a WAG. The WAG had set the TMDL as a daily, total daily and maximum, whatever the load is.
Total maximum daily load.
For, for whatever, phosphorus, temperature and all that. That's already been set. And we can't change that right at this, this moment unless they're, unless we don't continue to not meet those, that criteria that they already set. What this grant is going to hopefully help us do is start getting some action items and money for further studies or grants to help people, you know, meet all of this stuff. Or to get, see if we can get that back to the, meeting the maximum daily loads that have been set and stuff like that. So I think it's a, it's a good turn of events for us. Not only to get some, some funding coming in, but also get some, some actions done in, in the county.
Well, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys are starting to comment on some of our subdivision plots and some of those issues that PNZ deals with. You know, there's a lot of things we can't really enforce yet. Like maybe this should have been sewored instead of septic systems, this development or whatever, but we got to start somewhere, build that, to build that base, to build that knowledge. And so that we have that technical brains behind and say, no, we need to do this because we proved it over here. And, and that way we don't end up in court on a lot of this stuff all the time.
And I think that's where that diverse board or group is going to come into play. You know, we'll be able to get, start getting some of this knowledge put together and concentrated in one place, and then we can go from there on, on that part of it. It's like you say, the, the WAG is already in place and it will continue in place until DEQ decides something needs to be done on, on that part of it.
Tell to comment.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I love this idea. I love it moving forward. I would like to see a commissioner on this simply because I would love to see this as a regional effort. We did just discuss the United, what are they called? Big Lake Water Quality. I would love to see one group for Valley County and a commissioner being on that can make sure that we keep this as a regional conversation. And we're addressing all bodies, not just that we have separate entities looking at different bodies.
And that's what we're looking for, Commissioner Malpin, is to get as many people involved at this as we can or a, a group that's manageable to make a, try to make these decisions and kind of point us to where, where we need to go.
So, John.
I would love to see Warm Lake engaged in that too. They also have a sewer and water, and I don't remember if you guys had them on there.
Okay.
Uh, we actually don't. Warm Lake falls in a different drainage. So we're, we're in what's called a HUG code. It's a watershed that is one drainage for the North Fork River, where Warm Lake is actually in the.
South Fork Salmon.
South Fork of the Salmon Drainage. So it is a different drainage. I think they, they could actually still be on the, the group or still attend and get useful information. But for going for funding, we, we have to keep it to this specific HUG code for the North Fork.
And they could apply for that down the road.
They can.
Hey, any more questions? We're out of time.
I just wanted to express the district's appreciation for the financial help that you provide and also the other support, moral support and that, that we can accomplish our goals of maintaining and then hopefully improving the natural resources and the well-being of all those that we serve within the district. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
We appreciate your time.
Chairman.
So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve a letter of support for the USBR Water Smart Cooperative Watershed Management Program.
I'll second that.
Who did second it? Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. How old is this document?
It's still relevant and sometimes easier than the website, so I delivered three of those to plan and zoning. I thought the commissioners might be interested in. If you are, I can give some more over.
Sandy Lo. We'll leave it here and probably be up there on that rack and if we need it.
I may have more in planning and zoning.
Okay.
So that, will that come with me or do you have to get Sherry to say it?
Yeah, if you could get it to Sherry somehow, that'd be great.
What I can write on there is she, just that she appeared virtually. And you can take it with you, but if you can take it down to my office, just to have it scanned in, so we have a copy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's one thing the district has been a little overwhelmed with is calls from realtors and people developing soil type. And now that support used to come from the RCS a little bit more. They do have a website, a link that. This is the hard copy. Thank you very much.
1977?
Yeah, I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Uh, you can ruin dirt pretty quick if you're not careful. Okay, thanks you guys for coming in. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Hey, we're going to move on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a discussion decision removing records of survey from PNZ. Don't know anything about this.
No, but you will.
Okay.
Have that big plat container that has traditionally held all the records of survey. What happens is, you know, when a surveyor records a record of survey, one copy goes in the vault at the clerk's office. We get the other copy, we scan it in now, and then we put it in these plat doors. Well, since it's scanned in and there's a copy down at Doug's office, then we really don't need that additional record of survey held in our office, and then we would be able to remove that big container.
So are those old maps all scanned in too? Everything in it is scanned?
Everything in there is scanned in. It's records of survey.
So, oh, do you know what the schedule is on grinding up records of survey? Do we have to keep five years of, do you know?
Oh, they're at Doug's office.
Yeah, we're, we're not completely destroying them. She's just.
Oh, okay.
Just a copy of it.
Where would these go in storage?
Well, no, nope. I know one surveyor that would love to have them and the container if we don't want it.
Should that be the county surveyor, Cinda?
I, I don't think Chip would want that in his house.
You don't think so? Okay.
But, I mean, we could ask around if people want it.
So the question is, is that do we, you know, on the retention, do we even have to have a paper copy any longer? I mean, most things now are electronic and you can.
Still have a copy in the vault down in the clerk's office, so these are just the redundant copies is all we're talking about.
Thank you, Dave.
Do we have to have an original even in clerk's office?
Yes.
The ones in the clerk's office are originals, right?
Yeah.
And they bring it, when the surveyor records a record of survey, they bring in two, two originals. One goes in the clerk's, one has traditionally gone in ours. I think that's probably because, you know, we were over in a different building.
Just a dumb question because I'm full of them today. Would the road department want these?
No, I, I keep telling them they need these.
They don't want them.
But they could access the online version if they were looking for them.
Yeah.
I told them they need the container. They don't want it. They have one of their own.
What do you think, Dave?
I'm a big fan of redundancy, but I, you know, I don't think we have the space to store a lot of extra stuff, so I'd say let's get rid of it.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I would make a motion that says we allow the planning and zoning office to do with the copies of the plat surveys, records of surveys, excuse me, as they see fit.
I'll second that.
And the container.
And the container, if you can find a use for it.
I'll second that amendment. Hey, it's been moved to second. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 If you, if you want to come see what I'm talking about, you can.
I might come and maybe dig one out that has my ranch on it. Is that possible?
Sure, pick which one.
And I could frame that and put it in my office. Or she can go online and get the same thing, you know, can't she?
Yes, she can.
Never mind.
Yeah. Well, you can come look and see if it's anything that.
And we got five more minutes into while you're here. Do you remember when we last redid the comp plan, did we hire an outside contractor or didn't we talk about that?
Well, in 1997, we hired Carla Olson.
Oh, yeah.
She started that process and did not finish it, and we finished it. That was a couple hundred thousand, I think it was. And we finished that. And then the second, we hired parametrics at one point to do the thousand-foot setback from Highway 55 study. You know, that's when we came up with the thousand-foot setback and commercial hubs at all the intersections. And that didn't. And that didn't go anywhere.
Well, we're talking about maybe using Harper funds possibly for the help on, you know, the overlays and the zoning issue and just trying to figure out about what you think that would cost.
Couple hundred thousand, at least. I mean, McCall just did theirs, how much did they spend?
I have no idea how much they spent on that.
Is that what Elaine did, Elaine Clay, was that her job?
No, um, Logan Simpson did it.
Oh, Logan Simpson.
Few years ago. Elaine Clay is just a spokesperson for Idaho Smart Growth.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it probably cost a couple hundred, I mean, the Waterways is costing 120. I can't imagine that the, a full-blown comp plan study and it cost, you know, less than 200,000.
So, if we were to figure around 200, 220,000, we'd probably come pretty close, two and a quarter maybe.
I would think so.
You know anybody else besides Logan Simpson that does that?
Oh, absolutely, there's lots of people that do that.
So, we get our FID out and get a firmer figure on that?
There, there's, you know, lots of people even in the, in the Boise Valley that would do something like that.
Thank you for your help on that.
That's one of the-
We've been talking of planning and zoning, they've wanted a coordinator to do something.
Well, no, you guys sent them the directive letter and we haven't actually discussed that yet. That's on the March 1st agenda. That hasn't been their decision yet. They're looking at that March 1st. Okay.
Hey, anything else for send-up? Okay, thank you. Can't think of anything right now. We'll move on down to our agenda, our next item is also an action item. This is the 2021 homeowner exemption tax cancellation request. And the answer is no, no more canceling taxes. No, go ahead, Jen, I'm just kidding.
How are you guys doing today?
Oh, it's wonderful.
Good. Um, so this is kind of just a formality. And I gave you a little bit of a preview at the commissioner meeting last week. I just emailed some reports to you about 15 minutes ago, so you can see the details of this tax cancellation. Uh, due to the legislature changing the law, um, homeowner exemptions can be applied for and granted at any point during the year after the assessed values have been turned over to the State Tax Commission and the levy rates have been calculated. So, because of that, um, the homeowner exemptions that came in after the fact have totaled to be, sorry, let me get to the right page of my report, 11,305,274 dollars in canceled assessed value, which equates to 60,705 dollars and eight cents in tax value cancellation.
Can you say that again, 60,075?
60,705 and eight cents. For Valley County and our, um, tax codes, that's 14,354 dollars and 57 cents. But then if you lump in the EMS, uh, let's see, the EMS portion of that is 1,986 dollars and 64 cents. So, I am asking for you to approve this tax cancellation, though the legislature has kind of taken that choice out of your hands. But that's how we are processing these is as tax cancellations in the system. So, I figured we ought to follow protocol and get something on the agenda and have you officially review the numbers and see the effects that this has on Valley County and the other taxing districts in our, in our county.
Now, this doesn't get replaced by the state?
This does not, nope.
What, Doug, what is it, is it, um, not homeowners, it's the circuit breaker that gets replaced?
That does, yeah.
Those tax revenue?
Yes.
So, the city of McCall, oops, took a, gonna take almost a 14,000 dollar hit. And so is the sc- gee, many Christmas.
And I alluded to this a little bit last week, but Valley County is lucky in that we don't have a large homeowner percentage as our tax base. And so, the effects that we have seen due to this new law is not nearly as substantial as some of the other counties around the state of Idaho. So, while this is a large amount of money and we are upset about it, other places are outraged. And the legislature will be hearing about it through IAC, they've put together a package of the totals for the state of Idaho.
Um, did you get the email from Seth this morning?
I did see that.
If you had a chance to go through those numbers as well, talk about making something complicated.
Right. Um, you know, I really firmly believe that simple is the best way to do things. And if you're going to throw in a bunch of algorithm, algorithms and calculations and things, it, it's going to be something that's difficult to understand. I agree that we need property tax relief across the board. I don't know that this is the best way to do it, but we definitely need to look into what they're proposing and, and have a voice on whether or not we support it.
And you, I'm assuming you'll be on that call tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Does anybody understand what we're doing here? So, I would entertain a motion then to approve the 2021 hence homeowner exemption tax cancellation request of 60,705 dollars and eight cents.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Have a good day.
Hey, that's just about what we're paying, I think the treasure now, we could just take that out of her budget, that would be okay.
Right.
Okay, we're going to move on down, our next agenda item is not an action item, this is discussion on broadband, which we kind of had earlier. And I think everybody's kind of on the same page now, so that's good. Jerry, I'm assuming you're going to line it up with the broadband committee to come in, kind of give us an update? Or do you want to wait till March when we know numbers?
I'd like to wait until we actually have the plan out. I mean, they're supposed to be getting that, we've got an engineering study that just came back. Um, so they're putting that into the packet. I mean, if you guys would like to hear from them before then, that's great. But I, I almost feel like we need to wait until the, the plan is in place, that the contractor's working on entry point.
I agree.
I'm happy to do whatever you guys want.
Well, I guess my only thinking on that is don't wait too long till we, so we don't have any influence on it. I mean, I'd like to get it before, you know, if we need to change something or back out or something before we go. Now, I know there was a discussion here about, uh, non-disclosure agreement with Idaho Power, where are we on that?
Uh, so that was so that Biare, the guy's doing the engineering, uh, pres- or the engineering report could just look at Idaho Power's sheets to show where the poles were at. That's all that was. So, we just had to-
Is that already happened? I mean, that was from Valley County though, wasn't it?
You know what, we didn't have to sign that, at the end of the day, Biare signed it because it was just a, it was an agreement that they would not disclose where Idaho Power had their infrastructure.
Well, that's already done.
That's already done.
Okay, is there anything else, Dave, you want to bring up on this or any?
No, I, I like having more information once we get that back from in March.
Okay, so we'll leave that up to you, Sherry, to kind of get that agenda when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, then we have, uh, an executive. Can we go in early, Doug?
Yes, sir.
So, we are done with pretty much the morning agenda, we are going to go into executive session. Per Idaho Code 1F, 742061F, so I would entertain that motion.
I'll make motion, we go into executive session per Idaho Code 1F.
Second.
Moved in seconded by Roll Call.
Ding and aye.
Mop and aye.
Ashbrook aye, and Doug will be in at 11:25 by the time you get us turned off.